It's as glad to be here tonight as I am glad to be here tonight. I've been gone away from here for a few days and everywhere I go, people know about Tarrant County College.
(laughter)
They do. I was asking, all those nurses at MD Anderson, you get your training at TCC? You know, a few of them did, ran to a few people who got started at Tarrant County College. So, we're known everywhere. At MD Anderson, they have the best, the absolute best doctors and nurses and caregivers you could ever have anywhere. They are wonderful, wonderful people. I understand that it takes almost an act of Congress that comes on the immigration law to get a job at MD Anderson. It's that tough because they want nice, warm, caring people. Nancy shaking her head because she's having a current experience with her husband at MD Anderson and she knows all about that. And I want to tell you a quick story. When we drove up to MD Anderson to check in, we were checking into, and for those Rotarians in the house, you'll appreciate this, checking into the Jesse A. Jones International Rotary House Hospital that is a part of MD Anderson. My assumption is the foundation, Jesse Jones Foundation built it, Mr. He, that's my assumption. The hospital owns it, the foundation owns it, I guess. And the Marriott Foundation runs the hospital. So there's this place you drive right up and the hospital is on the left. There stands Nancy Chang. Out on the curb, over here, over here. She happened to be there the very same day that I was checking in. And check in for us was a breeze, just a breeze. And then we got everything all figured out except we want to stay in the Jesse A. Jones. I'm going to be real short, I promise.
That's fine.
We want to stay in the Jesse A. Jones Hotel because it's connected to the MD Anderson clinics. You don't have to go outside for anything. Everything is just right there. That's where we want to be. So we were on the waiting list to get into the hotel. There's always a waiting list to get in that hotel. Every day, 24 hours a day, somebody's waiting to get in. So we're on the waiting list. We have no idea whether we're going to get in or not. So we're sitting there for our very first stop at the appointment desk. And up walks these two women, two young women, who kind of looked at me. She said, "Are you Irma Johnson Hadley?" I said, "Yes." She said, "Well, I am," I'll call her Jane Doe, can't think of her name right now, "and this is Suzie Doe Q. We were sent by Mr. Jesse Q."
Willie.
Willie Q. Who is that? Heard that name somewhere before. He said, "You know Ms. Louise Appleman?" I said, "Of course, she's my boss." He said, "Well, he's her brother and he told me to find you. And whatever you need, he told me to make sure you get it." And I said, "Wow, well, we're on the waiting list for..." She said, "I said, 'We have a hotel room at the other Marriott, but it's like four tenths of a mile away. We don't want to do that.'" She said, "Don't worry, give him a minute." In 15 minutes, she calls Ardina because Ardina takes care of everything for me. And she said, "Well, you've got your rooms. We've got two rooms for you and blah, blah, blah." And that's been the story of my life for all these days I've been at MD Anderson. I came home Tuesday, I just got back on Tuesday. So it's very good to be back home and it's very good to be back at Tarrant County College and it's very good to be back to this wonderful place in the neighborhood. So, thank you.
It's not what you know, it's who you know.
I see, I see.
And now I will call the meeting to order. And we do have a visitor who would like to speak, Amy Willard with Catholic Charities. Where are you, Amy? Come to this microphone right here, please.
Hello. My name is Amy Willard. I'm the Director of Executive Operations for Catholic Charities in Fort Worth. And it's my privilege today to take a moment of your time to share with you a great collaboration that we have with the Trinity River Campus. One of our focuses at Catholic Charities is ending poverty in our community. And we believe that the work that you do at the community colleges is a huge opportunity for people to help move them out of poverty. We have been working with the University of Notre Dame to do some research to determine what is the best way to move people out of poverty and what is the impact for someone receiving an associate's degree through the community college. And we have just really been welcomed and received so much support from the Trinity River Campus and they graciously agreed to partner with us on this endeavor. We are now finishing up the first year of a three-year research project. The primary researchers are the Department of Economics at the University of Notre Dame. They have a program called the Lab for Economic Opportunities. And the research that they have seen from year one has been so phenomenal that they have actually approached us to feature the work that we're doing here in Fort Worth in a nationwide commercial. So, we had a film crew that came and was on campus at Trinity River and followed one of the students in our Catholic Charities client, Alexa, through her day and told her story of how receiving a degree at the community college is changing her life and creating a path for her out of poverty and also for her small child. We're very excited to tell you that this commercial is going to be shown nationwide on NBC this Saturday during the University of Notre Dame game. So, we came here to invite you guys to please tune in as the Fighting Irish play their game. And sometime before halftime, you'll see it's a full two-minute commercial. It's not a quick 30-minute spotlight. And I've seen some preliminary pictures. The campus looks beautiful. I think you'll be really proud of the way Trinity River has represented Tarrant County College. Just to give you a little bit of background on our next steps, we're continuing with this research and we will be expanding to a second Tarrant County campus this fall. I'm sorry, fall of 2015. From there, we also have been approached by other communities nationwide that would like to replicate the work that we're doing in Tarrant County College. And we really see this, for those of you who are familiar with some of the research that happened before Head Start began, the High Scope Perry Study. We really think that this has the same potential to have that nationwide impact. We've met with, for those of you who are familiar with Congressman Paul Ryan, we've met with Congressman Ryan and shared with him the initial researches that we've seen here. And he's very excited and interested in following along. So, absolutely. We've also recently been interviewed by some nationwide publications like The Chronicles of philanthropy where we've also shared the work that we've done here. So, please take a moment if you get a chance on Saturday. The game starts at 2:30 Central and we would love for you to watch the commercial. So, in the fall of next year, we'll be expanding to the Northwest Campus as well.
Thank you so much for sharing that with us.
Thank you.
And what a wonderful way to share our good story. And we appreciate the partnership.
We do too as well. Thank you.
Suzanne, you'll tweet out to everybody or Facebook to everybody or do whatever to everybody?
We'll capture it. You can send it out.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you so much, Amy. I know that, excuse me, Matt, I know that Catholic Charities chose to partner with Trinity River Campus and Tarrant County College because we've been partners with them in a lot of ways throughout the years and they always remember the people who love them the most. So, thank you, Amy, for remembering all that.
We have a number of things to celebrate tonight. Our first Student Access and Success presentation will be from the Northwest Campus, Dr. LeBlanc.
And, it's green. Good evening, Mrs. Appleman. Mrs. Hadley, welcome back. We're happy to have you back. And you look like Mrs. Johnson from several years ago. I love it. Yeah, you look great. Board members, thank you so much for giving us this opportunity to give an update on the Northwest Campus. First, yeah, is this working? It is. Okay. I've never had issues with my voice volume, but maybe today is a different day. Now you can hear me. So, thank you for this opportunity to present, give you an update on the Northwest Campus. I want to begin by sharing with you, you have in your packet the journal that was produced by the Northwest Campus with student work. And it's a literary journal and it won first place in the Southwest Division and the award was presented in Austin, November 8. Okay, thank you. We are also here to give you an update on the Center of Excellence for Aviation, Transportation, and Logistics, which is strategically positioned to play a very important role in the economic development of the region. It took great vision, discipline, and courage on the part of Mrs. Hadley and the board to take advantage of this wonderful opportunity to be at Alliance and we really very much appreciate that support. It also took a lot of effort and support on the part of business and industry and we're very appreciative of that. Today, you will hear about the aviation technology programs. However, we are also offering core curriculum coursework, Mrs. Hadley. You wanted to make sure that everything was offered there and we're working toward that. Telling the aviation program story is Dean Clint Grant. You will also get to meet some of the faculty and the students and of course, his colleagues, the other deans, and all the vice presidents are here to cheer him on. So please help me welcome Clint Grant.
Thank you very much.
I'm calling you the Grant Dad now.
Appreciate that, Dr. LeBlanc. And your package is, one of the things that I wanted to point out, I'm not going to read all that to you, but we're aggressively pursuing opportunities, particularly in higher education for students in these programs located at what we call Seattle, Center for Short. Those programs are near and dear to my heart and we're going after them. I think I'm driving Suzanne Carter absolutely crazy with all the articulation maps we've been bombarding her with lately. As we approach the 50-year history or the anniversary of the college, I thought it might be appropriate to also take a look back at the aviation program as well. As many of you are probably aware, the beginning of the Aviation Maintenance Program mirrors that of the South Campus and the original start of the college because that's where it started. Of course, you know, Dr. LeBlanc reminded me not too long ago that I was just out of diapers when it started, so I probably need to talk to some folks. I'd like to thank Thomas Kellum for helping me dig up some of these old pictures. Talked to a few folks that were around back then and the thing that struck me about this was how excited everybody was back in that time, back in that day, about the new aviation programs. It is very unique and it remains unique to this day. What I didn't know is the program was started by a gentleman by the name of Homer Smith. And originally, the Aviation Maintenance Program operated out of both the South Campus and Luck Field. How many folks in here have heard of Luck Field? Luck Field doesn't exist anymore. It was located just on the north, just a little bit north and west of Burleson. If you look in that top right corner of that picture down on the bottom, you can see 35. Now it's homes and buildings. Interesting thing was, the airframe, as I understand it, the power plant courses, the engine courses operated off the South Campus proper. The airframe courses operated down off of Luck Field. It didn't take the faculty and staff long at the new South Campus to learn that airplane engines are loud. So every time they wanted to start one up, it caused a lot of noise, they decided that's not going to work. So what they had to do was put the engines on trailers and haul them down to Luck Field to operate them. So, we complain if we just have to walk over to fire services now. So that's incredible. Okay. Now, by the way, I don't know who that gentleman is. That's not Homer. Homer had blonde hair like me, so that couldn't be him. But we do still have that engine. So, a couple of weeks ago, every year, we meet with all the 147 or the Aviation Maintenance Programs in Texas and we talk about different things. This year, we're talking about the new 60-hour rule and FAA things and stuff like that. Ran into some folks that remembered when this program started. And one of the interesting things I found out, and I did not know this, that not only, they were very excited about the facility. We wanted to show off our new toy up there. So we invited them all up there and I found out from one of the gentlemen that not only have we grown to become one of the, or the largest program in Texas, but we were also the first in Texas to offer 147 aviation maintenance through a public college program. So we're really excited about that. We believe also that we are, and I think Tyson's back here somewhere, we think we're the first to offer helicopter flight training in Texas as well. Now, we were in a race with TSTC down in Waco for that honor. But we're claiming victory unless they can prove otherwise. Of course, shortly after starting at the South Campus, they moved up, leased a facility at Meacham Airport and then they built the facility that you all are familiar with. I think most everybody in this room is familiar. You can see it in the bottom picture back there on the right. And of course, the program continued to grow and build into what we know today. Now, as I understand it, the Northwest Campus began in 1976. They built WATB, the building that we just moved out of, in 1991. And at some point soon after 1976, the program became obviously part of the Northwest Campus. While we were in this facility, obviously, great things happened. The program grew, became the largest in the state if it wasn't already. We started the Avionics Program. We average between at any given time 250 to 300 students and have for the last 10 years or so and that number remains today. So we're very proud of that. Far and away, the largest in Texas. Okay, we started with maintenance, but as you know, now we have flight, logistics, and advanced composites. We intend to take, you know, full advantage of this amazing facility and there are many more things to come, especially in the area of continuing education. Like Dr. LeBlanc said, fill up that parking lot and that's what we intend to do. It's impossible for me to tell all the stories about how special this program really is to the folks that have been involved with it. It's very new, very important to North Central Texas as well as Tarrant County. One of the things that I did want to share with you though is something that's been going on since a long time before I came here. As a matter of fact, it started back in 1992. The Professional Aviation Maintenance Association, or PAMA, is a national organization with local chapters scattered throughout the United States and the local chapter here in the DFW area is very active. Ruben Flores was the president back in 1992 and he started an annual golf tournament. And that golf tournament over the last, since 92, has raised over $170,000 for students for scholarships specific to this program. And this year Kurt Landrum, who is a longtime teacher at Tarrant County College, one of our instructors, and is the current active president of the local, PAMA Local, gave Liz Sisk a check for $12,000 for this year's golf tournament. And that will fully fund at least two students through this entire program. They won't pay a dime. And I cannot tell you, I play in that golf tournament every year. I'd like to say I win every year, but I have to play with Tyson and Joe, so that's never going to happen. But I can't tell you how many students from Tarrant County College have gone on to work in the industry and play in that golf tournament. I can't count them. I can't count them all. It's just a legacy that continues and continues, and we're very proud of that. And we want to start that for our aviation flight students as well. So, that's the next thing on this. Can we go ahead and show the video?
Tarrant County College has been about the business of making education and training accessible to the people of Tarrant County. If we're going to do something, we want it to be first class. So, trustees, we thank you for your support of this facility.
I want to welcome you to the Tarrant County College Northwest Campus Center of Excellence for Aviation, Transportation, and Logistics. Yes.
Hello, I'm Joe McCourt. I'm the Director of Aviation for Tarrant County College. We received FAA certification on this facility on August 20th. We started classes August 25th. In that short period of time, from us stopping class on July 31st, together with the contract company, we moved 18 aircraft, 20 labs in the vicinity of 10,000 items of training equipment to this new facility, packed, unpacked, moved, and made it operational for our students to use.
You know, there was talk about moving this program to Alliance, and of course, over the years, you saw how it kind of evolved, and then hopes were built, and then it didn't really happen. And so, I really didn't hold out a lot of hope for moving to Alliance, at least within my career. The history goes back to the 80s, from what I understand, when the airport first opened. The advantages that we have here are the facility, of course. We can operate our flight program out of it. The students actually get a feel for being on an airport. They get the feel for, you know, they can hear the aircraft taking off and landing. They also have the feel for the security issues that you run into on an airport. So, we have to make sure that we maintain control of the ramp area and that sort of thing. But from an operational perspective, it just gives more realism to the program, and we're operating more like an actual aviation entity.
I love the move. I think the building is awesome.
I think there's a definite value being on an active airport with a lot of aviation industry.
You can see the opportunity for more organization, have better abilities to have everything in one spot.
You don't lose the time. You're not late to class because, oh, I've got a class here, and you have to drive there. If TCC had not had this aviation program, the next closest viable for my budget would have had to go to Texas State Technical College in Waco.
There is a huge value of being on an airstrip, airfield. It just, it gives you a better sense of what you're wanting to do, where you want to head.
The commitment by TCC to come up here and purchase this facility shows tremendous support and a real commitment to the industry and foresight as to how the industry's going to grow and how TCC can be a big player in the industry. The facility is incredible, the resources that are here, from the Learning Resource Center to the maintenance hangars where we can get our hands on and look into the internal guts of the engines and the different instruments that we have in the airplanes, really is a tremendous tool for our flight students.
TCC is helping me achieve my dream. Helping me achieve my dream by offering the facility, the aircraft, the assistance, the people who are obviously chosen for their dedication to students and interested in student development. So, my dream is, two years from now, and I'll tell you if I've achieved it then, but I certainly, it's on me.
Behind us here, we have a full-motion flight training device, or advanced aircraft trainer. This is a Redbird, commonly referred to it as the simulator, although by FAA terms, it's not a simulator. It's a more of a flight training device, but it's a full-motion. It can simulate the Cessna 172 aircraft that we have, as well as the multi-engine Piper Seneca. And as you can maybe see behind me, it is full-motion and moving. We do have an instructor in there flying it today. And so, it's a lot of fun to fly, really does a great job of recreating the flight environment, giving the visual cues, and providing a procedural trainer for students, which helps to cut down on the overall cost and instill some of that sense of security and stability as, yes, I know what to do in emergencies, and we can simulate things that are very dangerous to simulate in an airplane inside our training device here.
We started the logistics programs fairly new in the spring of 2013 with our first class. This semester, rolled out our final three courses for the entire program. And it's a big undertaking move, everything that was at Meacham Field and also in the WATB building.
The program's great. It teaches you a lot, you know, about logistics, the operations, truck carriers, you know, everything that's out there and that moves the world, moves the freight.
The other benefit for moving up here to Alliance is we have a close partnership with Alliance Texas and Hillwood and all the companies that are located here. There's, I believe, over 150 different companies that operate out of Alliance, and a good portion of them are large logistics companies.
Composite is a fiber, in this case, carbon fiber, encapsulated by an epoxy matrix. We teach basic composites, advanced composites, composite fabrication using equipment such as the autoclave, which is what's behind me. Moving our composite lab to this new location allowed our lab, for the first time, to be climate-controlled. One of the most important facets of composite fabrication is controlling the environment in which the part is built. In closing, I want to leave you with this one thought. Composites are the future, and we're teaching it now.
I would just like to thank everybody involved in the move, enabling TCC's aviation to be located in the premier aviation center for the country. And it's going to put our graduates on a strong foundation going forward to the workplace.
This is kind of like coming home to me. And I really enjoy being at an airport. A lot of people are annoyed by the noise, but to me, it's like music. I love hearing the airplanes take off and land.
I want to say that I appreciate the foresight and the efforts that TCC has put in to develop this program and make it available to us.
I just want to thank TCC for the opportunities it's given to all of us.
The work that Nina's group did to move us up there was incredible. I think I actually saw Gary Prather smile one time, so I know it was very successful. The ribbon cutting, in your packets, there's, and again, you can read that at your leisure, but it, there's things in there that illustrate some of our industry and business partners, as well as our educational partners and the things we're working on. And at the ribbon cutting ceremony, Dr. LeBlanc and the chancellor rightfully and proudly, you know, offered thanks to all the industry partners, the board, and everyone involved in this. And our division echoes that as well. But there, this is the only chance I've got to do this, and I want to offer my own thanks. I didn't get to up there, but I'm going to do it today. I'm going to read this, because I'm a little bit nervous, and I want to get it right. But I just want to give a personal word of thanks to Dr. LeBlanc and Dr. Ellis. They're amazing leaders, and I am so appreciative of the opportunity to be part of this campus and these programs. I like to say that I'm an airplane guy, assuming the role of a dean. Dr. LeBlanc has challenged me beyond what I thought I could do in bringing these new programs to reality. I've had lots of help from so many people, like Suzanne Carter, Cheryl Harris, Kirsten Cooper, just to name a few. Dr. LeBlanc gave me the freedom and encouragement to figure it out and push to make it happen because she believes in these programs and the people associated with them. Those of us at the Northwest Campus feel privileged to work for Dr. Elva LeBlanc. She has truly made a difference on our campus. And thank God she hired Dr. Ellis to keep me between the lines and out of trouble, because that's a full-time job. I have two hopes for the future of this place. One is, in just a few years, I'm banging on Nina's door, saying I need another hangar. And the other is, 50 years from now, a young, sprightly aviator like myself is proudly presenting to the Board of Trustees about the colorful 100-year legacy of aviation at Tarrant County College. Thank you. We also have some students from the program. If you guys could come out or stand up.
Dr. Ellis, come up and bring all of your colleagues, everyone who's here from Northwest Campus, which will empty the hall.
I also had one other gentleman here. Rick, where are you at? Raise, wave your hand. I asked Rick to come down because he was in the second graduating class of this program.
Y'all, come up here and face the audience. Come, oh, okay.
Helicopter pilots, we got any of those? Fixed-wing pilots and mechanics. And our department chair for the flight program, Tyson Walker, and Director of Aviation, Joe McCord.
We're going, I think we're going to try to do a photo, so come.
Come, we're all family here.
Snuggle up.
Bevels to the side a little bit.
Oh, you pilots, put in your chest a little bit.
You get all these folks down here? Okay. Thank you all for coming. Best wishes for continued success. Next time you get on an airplane, think of these folks. They may have had a hand in your transportation. Thank you all for coming. We really appreciate you.
Students, faculty, staff, thank all of you so much for every role that you've played in this. Dr. LeBlanc, thanks for your leadership. This is awesome.
Dr. McIntosh, are you back there somewhere? There you are. Come forward and tell us about the Employees Care Campaign.
Well, in the spirit of sharing good things.
Good.
Well, good evening, Chancellor.
Hello, Joe, how are you?
President Appleman, Board of Trustees. As we've done this time of year for the past several years, I'm pleased again to bring a report on the TCC Employees Care Annual Giving Campaign, which we've just concluded. Let me begin by giving you a few points of background. This is an annual giving campaign administered by the foundation on behalf of the college, which we promote in the fall of the year, providing for giving for the next 12 months forward. Historically, college administration has followed a one-ask philosophically, philosophy meaning a focused one period of the year for promoting both United Way, local missions, and in most recent years, the cause of providing scholarship opportunities to deserving TCC students. The TCC Employee Campaign is organized according to CELT divisions with an agreed total overall campaign goal, and then proportionally allocated to each division by employee count. Each CELT leader volunteers, right, or maybe I should say assigns an individual or individuals to be the boots-on-the-ground, day-to-day manager of the CELT division's campaign. The campaign officially began October 1st this year with a challenge and appeal from the chancellor to each of 2,000-plus employees. The method for giving is both online and the old-fashioned pledge form. All right? The goal for 2014-2015 was $180,000. I'm pleased to report to you that TCC employees gave and committed $218,000. Actually, $218,732, to be exact. We count every penny. Of that, employees are directing $192,000 to benefit TCC students. All right, now, here are a few more details. All six of our TCC campuses exceeded their specific goals. And yes, I said six. The Northwest Campus achieved 106% of goal. Northeast Campus, 109%. Southeast Campus, 110%. Trinity River, 122%. South Campus, Dr. Jordan, 151%. And our newest, the Virtual TCC Connect Campus, led by the infamous Dr. Carlos Morales, achieved 205%. All of our CELT groups were outstanding as well, but I must highlight the Facilities and Real Estate Group, which includes the many fine folks who keep our buildings and grounds so well-kept, operational, and maintained. They achieved 190% of their divisional goal and were second in percent participation, which is always second only to the chancellor's group, which always achieves 100%. All of these good results would not have been achieved without the good efforts of the campaign managers. And if you allow me, it's somewhat small on the screen, but I want to name each of these. Doug Pete, Southeast Campus, Jack Harrett, Northeast Campus, Tammy Tennis, Administration and General Counsel Group, Susan Taylor, Information and Technical Services Group, Alex Holloway, Communications, External Affairs, Bonnie Smith, Finance, Maria Romero, TCC Connect, Gloria Bill, the chancellor's group, Ann Arvin, Robert Munoz, Asia, Asia, let's see, Asia Lacy, Kathy Ritchie, and Tracy Soto, Trinity River, Lisa Benedetti, Northwest Campus, DJ Massey, Real Estate Facilities, Erica Rizzo, and Mac Belamontes, Academic Affairs, Student Success, Gladys Emerson, Amy Newman, and Carl Schreibe, South Campus. Let's give all of these campaign managers. So, finally, amazing generosity, amazing commitment. All of this leads to success within reach for our students and the citizens of this community. Thank you all very, very much.
Thank you for that report, Dr. McIntosh, who, of course, is our executive director of the TCC Foundation. And Liz Sisk was mentioned earlier in the report as having received a check. She received it on behalf of the foundation. So, we appreciate very much the foundation and the work that they accomplish on our behalf. And that board met yesterday, and Ms. Vandergriff and I sit on that board on behalf of this board, and those wonderful campaign results were celebrated there as well. So, thank all of you who participated. Our next celebration is Tarrant County College Student Newspaper, The Collegian. Top honors during the national, wait, I'm not through yet. And I have to read it because there's so many things that they accomplished that I have to read it to you. There was a National College Media Convention in Philadelphia, October 29th and November 2nd. The Collegian won Weekly Newspaper of the Year and Website of the Year among two-year colleges. The Associated Collegiate Press recognized the Collegian as a finalist for the print category of its most prestigious honor, the Pacemaker Award. TCC was among only a handful of the nation's two-year colleges to receive this recognition. The Collegian placed second in its category in the convention's Best of Show contest. And last but not least, Eddie Gallagher, who I think is here, is And last but not least, Eddie Gallagher, who I think is here somewhere, there you are, was, who is our Director of Publications and has been since 1999, was named Distinguished Two-Year Advisor of the Year. And Kenny Coase, The Collegian's former Editor-in-Chief, was recognized with two second-place awards and a fifth-place award, and he is now at UT Arlington. And he was the only, he was the only two-year journalist recognized in the competition. And all of this, ladies and gentlemen, is out of the Fort Worth Business Press. So we're getting some really good press. Eddie, come forward. And she's brought up some friends with her.
Yes. And also, if you will allow me, Kenny had to leave. His plane left before he got to receive his Reporter of the Year award. And also, at an earlier conference, Diane Turner, who had been a faculty member for 40 years, was recognized by the Texas Community College Journalism Association as a distinguished Hall of Honor. She was one of the first of two recipients of that, and we got to recognize her at that conference, and I have her plaque, and I wanted you all to know about that one, too. And also, of course, we have Chris Whitley, our other advisor, and Dylan, our current editor that y'all met before. Thank you.
Madam President, while they're coming, I want to offer my personal congratulations to Eddie Gallagher for the outstanding work she has done over the years and years and years. One of the things I like, I like best about Eddie is that she teaches her students to be hard chargers in going after the news and reporting the news as they find it, even after they find that something might have been a little different, they'll go back and report it correctly. And I have always appreciated that about you, Eddie, and the staff that you've brought and the great students that you do. So, you know, I sit here month after month, and I listen to all of these reports and these accolades, and it just makes you think really deeply about what 50 years have done to this community. 50 years to this community, and you don't think a lot about the details of what 50 years have meant until you see people come back like first student in an aviation program, the largest one in the state, you know, first students in the journalism program in community colleges to win certain kinds of awards here at Tarrant County College. And you know, the thing is, they all go back to the Board. All of this goes back to the Board of Trustees for understanding what it takes to have a first-class community college. So thank you, and thank you, Eddie, for your leadership.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
She even hires retired old chargers, like Bill Lace, to help her keep things straight.
Congratulations, Kenny, especially. He overcame the hand-me-down, handed me.
By the way, Eddie, I want you to know that I know that some of the stories that your people have written, Bill Lace sicced them on us. And said, "Have you heard about so-and-so and so-and-so?" And a reporter will call me and ask, "Well, Chancellor, you know, come to me a little bit today?" And I say, "Oh, yeah, let's talk about it," you know? All open, so.
We never tell our source.
No, no, Bill tells me. I sicced him on you, Irma. Okay, all right, that's fine.
Thank you all. Congratulations.
Thank you.
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 Thank you all. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Awesome. I'm going to keep doing it. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Now, something that's not on the agenda, but assuming the privilege of the Chair, and I know y'all would want to know about this, three of our... I see lots of Kleenex out there. Three of our ladies have been honored and are about to be honored, and I want to acknowledge. Angela, stand up. Angela Robinson, Vice Chancellor of all things legal, is going to, in fact, tonight, she's missing a reception honoring her and some others as the Fort Worth Texas Magazine's top Tarrant County attorneys. Is Dr. Kim Beatty here?
Dr. Kim's back here.
Dr. Beatty, stand up, Kim. Associate Vice Chancellor of Student Success, and she's going to be honored in December as one of three pioneering women of Texas by Plaid for Women at their annual conference. And finally, Suzanne Catrou, Executive Director of Communications, PR, and Marketing, is one of 23 great women of Texas that the Fort Worth Business Press is honoring last night. So we are so very proud of all of our folks, students, faculty, and...
And my personal congratulations to each of the three of you. They couldn't have chosen three better women. Thank you for being a part of TCC.
All right, let's get to work. I'm such a good time. I would ask a motion to approve the minutes of the October 16th, 2014 meeting. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye? Any opposed? And I would ask a motion to approve the consent agenda, consideration and approval of the reappointment of Mr. Mark McLendon to the City of Collville Tax Increment Financing District Board of Directors, and consideration and approval of the Department of O.K. Carter to the City of Fort Worth Proposed Northside Stockyards Tax Increment Financing District Board of Directors. Motion to approve. Mr. Heed.
Second.
Second, Dr. Morrison. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Get your cowboy hat ready.
Actually, both of my grandparents and uncles are ranchers, and many, many times I'd have to come in with them and bring cattle into the stockyard to sell them. The old Swift plant was still there, so I have a sort of deep affection for the place. And one thing about traveling in a cattle truck, it's really good to just keep it moving.
I'll bet.
While your mic is on, Mr. Carter, would you like to give us an Audit and Finance Committee report?
Yes, the Audit Committee met. Basically, we were reviewing the, there is a legal requirement that we have an annual internal audit, which we have just completed. It's 70, 80 pages. You will be given a copy of it here shortly, when you can also speak to our auditor, if you will. The audit was actually terribly non-eventful. There are no critical issues to discuss, which I guess is the best way to do it. In fact, I've read it all, and it was good for two-power naps before I got through. I would point out that it also notes that we will soon be entirely free of bonded indebtedness. And I've checked the top 10 largest governmental entities in Tarrant County, and there's only one that can say they have no bonded indebtedness whatsoever, and that would be us. That being said, I would be remiss to note that we do have some debt that we're going to pay Bell Helicopter Textron, and there's one tiny issue in the audit that I just wanted to make a point about, which says that we have no plans to issue bonds in the future. But I just would like to note that we always reserve the right to issue bonds, and we may indeed do so because we'll have a little space when we pay this off, and it'll probably be revenue bonds, but we may indeed consider some of those along the line. And that's about, that's about it, so.
Any questions of Mr. Carter? If not, the Governors Committee met to create and approve the agenda as you have it tonight. Institutional planning, Mrs. Vandergriff.
Okay, thank you. Yes, the IP Committee met last week, and I wanted to share with you that the Institutional Planning Committee has really been in effect. This will be the first full second year, and it's been a great opportunity for board members to be involved at the ground level bubbling up. And so, having said that, in June, the IP Committee met with North Richland Hills Mayor and Mark Hinman, the City Manager. And so that was in an effort to really look at the town center, because their vision was to provide five acres for something with TCC to build on. During that meeting, the Chancellor provided the opportunity to explore building something on the Northeast Campus. So with that in mind, it's taken a couple meetings with North Richland Hills, but they arrived last week as well to really discuss not only that opportunity more specifically in what they're looking at, but also to determine if we can expand the TIF. That was the main goal. I say all this because all the materials that we had, the due diligence, there's a lot of people, a lot of you out there who provide us that material, and I want to thank you all from real estate and ultimately finance and academic with Dr. Gobin and his team. So we're really still in an infancy level, but we're getting there. And so I'm happy to report that I thought the dialogue was really positive, and they did agree that they probably could not build a 1,000-seat auditorium on that site. So that really prompted the other city council members, who I had not met before, to kind of engage of what their vision was, where on the campus do they feel comfortable having a site? And so I think that's important, to make sure that they're involved at this level because they are investors. I think it's 8.3 million from the TIF, and so this is more or less driving that conversation. But we want to be good stewards with their vision and their money as well as ours, and we will be. So having said all this, we will continue our discussion in closed session at the end of this meeting. Thank you.
There are minutes of that committee meeting at your places, if you would like. And if you have any questions, Ms. Vandergriff? If not, we will move ahead to item number A, consideration and approval of committee recommendations, and receive the annual audit report. Mr. Fitz, welcome.
Thank you, Moore.
Board of Trustees, today is my pleasure to present the annual report with Mr. James Fitz, an assurance partner with the firm of Weaver and Tittle. James has been with the firm for about 19 years, and he's been a partner since 2008.
Welcome back.
Thank you. It's good to be back. Thanks for having me. We are substantially complete with our audit. We've reviewed it, as Mr. Carter said, with the Finance Audit Committee in detail. I'm going to try not to get my feelings hurt that his review of the document is, that it's not a thriller.
That comes as a big surprise.
But truthfully, if your auditor's report could be described as scintillating, then there's probably something very wrong. And thankfully, the auditor's reports are fairly boring this year. So due to the fact that this is more like a novel than a short story, I'm going to keep this very brief. The auditor's report does express an unmodified opinion or a clean opinion on the financial statements. On the statement of net position, you'll see an increase in the district's total assets from just under $1.1 billion to just over $1.1 billion, increase of about $30 million, a decrease in total liabilities of about $7 million, mainly due to paying down the debt. And I think it's kind of neat, we discussed in the Audit Committee meeting, that the paying off the district's debt converges with the district's 50th anniversary, so maybe you can work in some bond burning into your celebration. On the statements of revenues, expenses, and changes in net position, you'll see the operating revenues were mostly flat. Operating expenses increased just a moderate amount, about 4.7%, coming down to a bottom line of an increase in net position of $37.3 million. And then skipping all the way to the back of the book, there are the federal and state single audit sections. That's our work on the district's federal and state grants that are expended during the year. You'll see in our reports there that we didn't report any material weaknesses in internal control over financial reporting or in internal control over compliance, and noted no compliance issues in the major programs that we audited. Anybody have any questions on that?
Thank you for your work. I also just wanted to note again, I think the audit will be put on our website. The coordinating board requires a far, far more extensive number of reports than would be typical for an audit. And so if you're really interested in the nitty-gritty of how the college works, what's being spent for what, I recommend that you go through and look at the, all those reports. Probably a third of the report are things that were done to the coordinating board. If you look at those, even if you're an experienced college administrator, whatever, you will, it will be insightful for you to take a look at that, because you'll really get a full idea of the full breadth of what we do. I noted as well that our budget's not $411 million, but that's really how much goes through the entire system. So, you know, we have very big and very cleanly-run college accounting-wise, so.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Thank you. Survived yet another audit.
I'd like to thank Mark McLendon, Nancy Chen, Stan Vick, and the whole Finance Department.
All of you who are part of this operation, please stand. Stand. Nancy?
We're a demanding bunch. We're always wanting another contract, copy of a check, bank statement, and they come up with us, so we appreciate it.
And they come up with it, don't they, every time?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Nancy's always wanting an award, and we always get one. So thank you, Nancy, for pushing for that award.
All right. Now, we have several items to act upon and to hear about, starting with insurance coverage annual review. Thank you. I'm pleased to report that on our renewal, our policy run, all of our policies run out on November 30th. Through the diligent work of both Mr. Robinson and Ms. Robinson, no relationship, we're going to save $52,738 on our total premium amount. That was accomplished by, thanks to Elva, no-loss history for the aircraft liability coverage and the airport liability, and thanks to the Robinsons for changing carriers on some other policies. So I would ask the court, I mean... Some habits die hard. I'm going to ask the Board to approve a payment of $1,145,508. And if you have any questions, either one of the Robinsons can answer. Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Carter, seconded by Dr. Morrison. All those in favor, aye? Any opposed? We're having a little sidebar here at governance. Our understanding was that we could not, did not approve the annual audit. We simply accepted it, acknowledged, received. Actually, Robert's rule said that you need to adopt it if you're going to relieve Mr. McLendon of responsibility for the time period that it's reported, except for in the case of fraud. So we do need a motion to adopt the report. Dr. Morrison, seconded by Mr. Heed. All those in favor, aye? Any opposed? Now we're legal, and Mr. McLendon's off the hook. All right. Thank you. Sorry for that. Except for fraud. Remember that.
Remember that, Mark. Sorry for all that distraction. Item number 10, Texas A&amp;M Engineering Continuous Commissioning, Trinity River Campus Project Update. Ms. Petty and Mr. Carter.
Good evening. Chancellor, President Appleman, and Board of Trustees. Tonight, we're going to visit a little bit about commissioning, which is an engineering term for a systematic process of assuring that buildings and systems actually operate in accordance with how they're supposed to be designed and how our needs are met. And we haven't done a lot of this on our existing buildings in the past, and as you've heard, we're 50 years old and we have a lot of old buildings. Back September 2013, as a board, you authorized us to move forward with a detailed assessment at the Trinity River Campus. And tonight, I have, we have a guest, and I, on the theme of it's not what you know, it's who you know, the lead of David Holkey and Walt Williams are two directors or engineers that I surround myself with. I'm lucky enough that these guys have forgotten more than I know about this topic, and have asked that a guest tonight, Dr. David Claridge, join us from Texas A&amp;M, and he's going to give us a short presentation and educate us. I want to give you a little background on Dr. Claridge, who is a PhD in physics from Stanford. He's a professional engineer at the state of Texas and has been with Texas A&amp;M University for 28 years on the faculty. And he currently serves as the Director of the Energy Systems Laboratory at Texas A&amp;M Engineering Experiment Station. He's a Fellow of the American Society of Mechanical Engineers and American Society of Heating, Refrigeration, and Air Conditioning. He's authored over 400 publications and has served as an advisor for 70 completed masters of science degrees and 14 completed PhD degrees. And so, as you can see, I'm well surrounded by somebody that's very smart on this topic. So, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Claridge to educate us a bit on commissioning this evening. Thank you.
Welcome, Dr. Claridge. Is it Dr. Claridge or Carter?
My name is David Claridge, alias David Carter.
Oh, David Carter. Well, well, welcome. I happen to know a little bit about TEES.
Good.
I served on the Texas A&amp;M Research Foundation Board for a number of years.
Oh, very good.
Where I became very enlightened about the great work that you all have done. Maybe you even heard a presentation from you during that time.
Probably not, because I don't get involved at, at, at that level within TEES too often. But we've had, we have a rather interesting program, and I'd like to move to the next slide. The Energy Systems Laboratory is an unusual engineering organization, particularly at a large research-oriented university, because we tend to work in areas that are, shall we say, sort of dirty fingernails engineering? And consequently, there aren't very many research grants to do such things. And so, we follow a model that's much more like medical schools, where, you know, you get sick while you, I mean, you, you go to a teaching hospital often, and you have a lot of staff physicians there. They have some medical students involved, but it's really, you know, the staff physicians are doing a lot of the work. We have a lot of staff engineers who often involve our students in the projects, so that they get, they, they learn some very applied things. But in the course of that, we've come up, one of our most successful efforts over the years has been the development of the continuous commissioning process for, for improving the operation of buildings. It's something that, you know, we've found consistently, we'll get 10% to 20% total energy savings with a very high return on investment, and same time, we'll improve the comfort in the facilities by working with the staff. We can have the next slide. It's something that we, we developed, and along the way, we felt like we would like to keep it sustained, and so, we started licensing it to a number of private sector firms, using the licensing fees then to develop software that, and tools that make it even more effective. And out of that, why, we have something where we typically see return on investment for the expenditures of anywhere from 30% to 100%. It's rather widely acknowledged, I mean, the whole field of commissioning existing buildings, improving their operations, is rather widely acknowledged as the most cost-effective way you can save energy in, in a building, in large commercial buildings, generally speaking, or institutional. If we can go to the next slide. I just wanted to give you an example of the fact that it isn't something that's here today and gone tomorrow. We have worked with folks on the A&amp;M campus for quite some time, and a group of some of the first buildings that we worked with, in the first year after they were commissioned, they saved $1.2 million. We went back 12 years later, I mean, there were certainly, we went back along the way when there were problems in those buildings, to get them back to where they needed to be. But we had a master's thesis that ended up reporting 12 years later, that in this group of buildings, the cooling savings had dropped slightly, from 45% to 39%. Heating savings, very modestly, from 67% to 64%. Electricity savings had gone up, and we won't claim that those were all related to the commissioning, because there were other things like, you know, people had put in computer monitors that didn't use as much energy and things like that on the electric side. But the important thing is that it's something that if your staff follows up and then uses, you know, professional assistance when necessary, why you can maintain performance for an extended period of time. You notice, these are really very impressive in the sense that the heating consumption in this group of 10 buildings was basically cut by 2/3, and that was not by putting any new equipment in. That was purely by optimizing the operation of the existing equipment. So, next slide, please. We have worked for about 10 years with the Alamo College. This is in San Antonio. A group of five colleges there that we've worked with extensively, and on the next slide, you can see just an indication of the degree of success there. Can we have the next slide? Yes. There, we've saved, in a six-year period, almost $9 million. They've invested cumulatively about $2.75 million. A very nearby client that we've had, that I decided, we decided not to put a slide up, but we've worked with DFW Airport for almost 10 years, and total savings at DFW are approaching $20 million, with an investment of about under $4 million. So, it's been very effective there as well. Next slide. In terms of what is underway here at the Trinity River Campus, as was mentioned, we did an assessment of the campus about a year ago, and estimated that for an expenditure of about $730,000, we would be able to produce savings of almost $370,000 to provide a simple payback of 2.1 years, or, you know, just under 50% ROI. And it was split up into two phases for implementation. And Phase 2A was the first implementation phase, that has been largely completed. Phase 2B is the next item on your agenda tonight for consideration. If we can go to the next slide to get some idea of what has happened so far. We started working, and I should mention that we're working with HHS Associates, which is a Dallas firm, that's one of our licensees, that we're working with on the project, and they're doing much of the work. And when I said Dallas, that's not true, actually, they're between here and Dallas, so I shouldn't mention that nasty D-word, I guess, here, but anyway. And the work has been largely completed on about half of the campus. During the first six months, while implementation was underway, the savings have amounted to $68,000. And the savings, you know, it's not reached its peak yet, because there's still some work to be done on those facilities as well. The next slide gives you an idea of, if you look at these, this is simply showing the monthly bills for the two meters on the campus, and it's not showing large savings, because in fact, for one thing, we're only working on slightly less than half of the buildings, and this isn't something that's going to cut your consumption in half. The point is that using weather-adjusted, so that, you know, we're looking at how things vary from one year to the next, and we can see clear savings on both of those meters that account for that $68,000. And the methodology used there is a very broadly-accepted engineering methodology for determining savings. The next slide, we look at the emissions reductions. If we annualize them to date, why, it's something like 1,100 tons of CO2, and some NOx and SOx and what have you. And I find it much more useful to me to say that it basically is equivalent to taking over 200 cars off the road, in terms of the emissions reductions. On the campus, there have been a number of things that you can read here that have been done in terms of, during the course of that work, to, you know, find things that were not performing properly, and then to work with staff to move toward getting them functioning properly. Much of that has been done, it hasn't all been completed yet. Another key factor in the whole process that we do is to work with the facility staff to let them know what we're doing and why we're doing it, and to provide training with, to them, so that moving forward, you know, they're, they know why the changes were made, and in fact, can keep those changes operational as we move forward. I think there is one, yes. The next phase of the project has a total cost of $370,000. That's been split into two pieces, and it will cover the other half-plus of the area on the campus, and we need to get through that to hopefully get to the roughly $370,000 per year in savings that were projected after the assessment. If you have any questions, I would be more than happy to respond.
Very impressive.
Just one comment, sir.
Yes.
Could you work on certifying a Tarrant County company to work with you? As I imagine we'll be, with these results, be perhaps pursuing some other business with you.
I'll tell you, if we, if we have an applicant from Tarrant County, we'd be delighted to have someone from Tarrant County as one of our licensees and work with them. Any other questions?
Any other questions or comments of Dr. Claridge? Thank you so much for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
And indeed, he has warned us, item number 11 is, will require a motion to approve the agreement with Texas A&amp;M University Engineering Experiment Station to perform continuous commissioning services at the Trinity River Campus through board-approved inter-local agreement, not to exceed $170,000.
Took the words right out of my mouth.
Is there a motion? Mr. Carter, seconded by Ms. Vandergriff. Other questions or discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Nina. I know you and your team have worked really hard on this, so all came to fruition, that's wonderful.
Item number 12, consideration and approval of IDIQ Contracting Method for Project Delivery and Approval of asbestos Abatement Trade Contractors for a Period of Two Years. Mr. McLendon?
Good evening. This item is to request your approval for the use of indefinite delivery and indefinite quantity IDIQ method of project delivery, and to approve a pool of asbestos abatement trade contracts for a period of two years. We received 15 responses, the committee selected the top five, and we felt that we would only, we are only looking at the, that there is work for the top five vendors. So, we present this to the board for your consideration.
And those top five are in front of you, there on the screen. Is there a motion to approve this recommendation? Mr. Heed, seconded.
Seconded.
By Dr. Morrison. Discussion questions? None? All those in favor, aye. Any opposed? Motion approved. Item number 13, consideration and approval of Cooperative Purchasing Network Agreement with TD Industries to Replace Natural Gas Piping Infrastructure Serving the South Campus.
This is an engineering night. The next two items are both from our engineering department, and I thought I'd take this opportunity to flash up some pictures on the screen. This is our new energy technology building under construction at the South Campus! And these are aerial shots. We have three of them, here's another one. We're so excited about how this is looking, and of course, we have that webcam that shows you the construction, but really, it's coming along. We're all praying for a mild winter, so it doesn't get us off track, but the building's really starting to take shape. We talked to Jeff Rektor this week, that did a little construction tour with his group. So, all of these items that we have tonight are sort of to support the construction that's going on. We've got over 100,000 square feet of new buildings coming to that campus here over the next year. So, these infrastructure requirements are important, and we appreciate your consideration of them. The first one is number 13, which President Appleman read to you, and this is to replace inadequate sizing piping with larger piping around the campus, and it's primarily to support these, this new infrastructure. And it's for $135,975.
Mr. Heed moves to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Vandergriff, discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 14.
Same. This one is for a request for Trade Services Agreement with Texas Refrigeration for the demolition of eight pump stations. Believe it or not, we have eight pump stations currently that date back to the original, they're the original pipes 50 years ago, that has chilled-in water that flows to the new buildings, that will flow to the new buildings. So, it's really important to support this, to approve the request for $370,000, not to exceed.
Motion to approve. Mr. Heed, seconded.
Seconded.
Ms. Winnet. Discussion questions? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 15.
Thank you.
Mr. Marshall.
Good evening, Chancellor, Madam President, Board. Item number 15, it's one of the rare occasions where I get to pay for something that I really don't know too much about. So, I'll ask Robbie Robinson to help me out, if you have any questions. Item 15 is for board approval for the purchase of Alertis Technology Server Upgrade. This is the web of technology we use when there's an event on campus that requires us to notify everybody immediately. We're moving from four separate systems to an integrated system, and the integrated system is the Alertis technology that you see in your packet. And the amount is for $260,750.
Motion to approve. Mr. Heed, seconded.
Seconded.
Ms. Vandergriff, questions? Discussion? All those in favor, aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I think you have the next one as well, consideration and approval of Leece C-Rock's Production Color Digital Press.
Yes, this item is the largest printing machine on campus. I've included, based on questions that I received from Angela that you asked during the, I guess, Governance meeting. I included additional information with regards to the throughput of that machine. It does the large projects that we have at, at the district, large printing projects that have multiple colors, heavier stock, booklets, and some of the information you received tonight are the result of that. One of the questions I think came about was with regard to, why don't we outsource it? We do outsource some of the projects that come to us, because even with this big machine, it's sometimes not big enough or fast enough to do what we need to have done, so I've included, last year, the split between in-sourced jobs and out-sourced jobs. The, the benefit of having it in-house is it allows us to turn around the jobs in three to five days. When we go to outsource, because we're competing with other customers of the, of the large printing firms, it takes us up to two to three weeks to get some things done.
Is it cheaper?
Is it cheaper? This is cheaper by tenths of a, of a penny per impression. So, doing it in-house...
Adds up.
It adds up when you have 900,000 impressions, just for this piece of equipment. The Printing Services Department is unique in its nature in that we are a charge-back. I have to actually run it like a profit and loss center, so the cost that we pay is recovered through charging back to both internal campus departments, and we even do jobs for the bookstore. When they ask us to print, well, not ask us, they, they're a customer, so they're paying us to print certain materials that they, again, resell. So, we recover costs, we keep the, the price lower than the outsourced by, we don't have to worry about paying our labor, but every other cost that you see here, this lease will be paid back through the charges that we have to our departments and through FALIT. And we return even additional monies through other operations in that shop. There's more than just this one big printer.
Those leases for how long? Those leases for how long?
This lease is six years and it's about $72,000 a year.
Okay, does this include all maintenance?
Yes, the lease includes a maintenance charge, so it we actually have a it's a it's a split fee, but it's combined here where we have a separate maintenance cost and a and the lease cost for the machine itself. That maintenance cost would we have to incur even if we purchased the machine.
Okay, is there a replacement plan in case it breaks down completely?
If it breaks down completely, it's covered by the lease. They would just move a new one in. The current one that we have now, we've had for 12 years, it was a purchase and we've been kind of suffering the last two or three years with it, trying to find parts when it fails because the vendor doesn't make it anymore, they don't make spare parts. Because of the technology is turning around a lot faster in this world than it used to, the lease makes the most sense. If something really neat happens in that environment, we can trade this equipment out and still maintain the same price in the lease. And at the at the end of six years, we can buy it if we want for a dollar, but I don't anticipate that.
Will it last six years?
Yes, the last one lasted 12, so, well, even if it doesn't last, it's it's leased, so it's up to the it's up to the vendor to provide us one that will, so.
Other questions?
I can move for approval. I want my stuff for four days, though.
Santa Claus is bringing it, right, over the holiday break?
Yes, this is this is coming over the break, yes.
We'll all have to go out and see it. Is it huge?
It's a room-sized printer. I would love to ship to give you a next time we're on Northeast Campus, if you're if we're there for the opening of the Northeast Early College High School, this is right across the street from it. It'd be nice for you to to see the operation. It's pretty impressive.
Motion to approve. Mr. Carter, seconded by Mr. Heed. Other questions or discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Standby, you've got the next one, too.
The last one is for our Microsoft Campus Agreement from JourneyEd.com. This is our annual license and support contract for $318,722.78. The most exciting part of this this year is within this price includes free software for our students. For the first time, we were able to offer Microsoft Office for up to five devices for the students and we announced that the other day and I mistakenly left my name on the email. So, you know, you try to typically try to hide those things when you send an email to 50,000 people, so I've been busy conversing with our students with regards to this is please follow the instructions in the email. And my name's not Bill Gates, so I'm not Microsoft. This is an agreement between them and Microsoft. But it's 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 the software, Microsoft Office, that typically retails for about $300 and their academic price used to be about 90, so now to give it away free for five devices, Merry Christmas to all our faculty, staff, and students.
Yes. Good negotiating, Tim. Yes, thank you, Tim. I wish I'd known this six months ago. Ah, a motion to approve. Mr. Heed, is that you?
Yes.
Okay, I need a second. Ms. Vandergriff, any other questions or discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number 18, Mr. Gates, consideration and approval of an agreement with Warren Douglas Agency.
Thank you, Madam President, Chancellor, Board Members. This is what allows us to do the great work that we've done through PR and marketing, so this is a continuance of that. Of this amount, only $60,000 of it is allotted towards the professional services provided by Warren Douglas. The balance of it actually pays for those media spots that we buy, both outdoor, indoor, radio throughout the course of the year. This was funded through the budget under the $1 million amount that you all approved, so I'd ask your approval tonight.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Ms. Vandergriff, seconded, Dr. Morrison. Any questions? Discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
By the way, Mrs. Appleman, excuse me, before you leave the the media thing, I want to thank Suzanne Cottrell for getting one of my major requests up and running, and I hope you have noticed it. If you have called in and you had to be put on hold for some reason, you got a message about something good about Tarrant County College, and I don't know about the rest of you, but they sound good to me. So, thank you, Suzanne. Have you gotten one yet if you had to be on hold for anything? So, they always notice a board member. You don't put trustees on hold. Well, next time Mr. Carter calls you for something, put him on hold and let's see what he thinks about the messages that he hears. I think they're really great. Thank you, Suzanne.
We've had some excellent press and ads and I've been collecting them for you, Suzanne, for your scrapbook, so. All right, Mr. McLendon, thrill us with the monthly financial report.
Thank you, thank you. I promise not to let y'all down. Okay, this is month number two, so that means that that is equal to 16%. So we typically look at items who will be greater than 20%. If we look at our revenue out of fund, there's really nothing to report. We're seeing that it's just a little bit less, 14%, and that's because a lot of our collection, our tax revenue collections will typically start after the month of November and then we will be ahead of it. So not to worry because it's 14%. We have nothing. I think it's pretty good. Okay, now we'll go to the expense side of it, and right now we should be fair and at 16%, however, we are 20%. But that is nothing unusual because we have so many pre-pays and encumbrances throughout on all these other accounts as I've as we go account by account all through the different periods, so that's what's driving that 20%, all right? So now we'd like to go look at our portfolio, portfolio, sorry. Our market value went from 208 mail to 204, so we expanded about 4 mail and cash. If we look at our 13-week yield is about .63 and we look at our 26, it's .6. Any questions on the finances? Thank you very much.
Thanks to whoever turned off the refrigeration. We were trying not to shiver. Chancellor's Report.
Madam President and Board Members, we have a few new staff introductions this evening, the first of which will be given to you by Dr. Joy Gates Black. Dr. Black, welcome.
Thank you, Chancellor Hadley. Mrs. Appleman and members of the board, I am very pleased to announce the appointment of Dr. Christopher Darville to the newly established position of Director for Student Learning and Success. Dr. Darville joined TCC in August of 2013 as the Coordinator of Special Projects at the South Campus. In that role, he worked closely with faculty across the college as they implemented new pedagogies and initiatives such as supplemental instruction. And he will, well, he will do that in this new role, and he will also work with the STEM Council as well to maximize campus and college efforts and resources relating to STEM. Dr. Darville has nine years of experience in higher ed, also which also includes tenure as an instructor and administrator at Southern Methodist University, at San Jacinto College, at River Parish's Community College, and Louisiana State University. He holds earned degrees from Louisiana State University, Southeastern Louisiana University, and the University of Texas at Austin. Please join me in welcoming Dr. Chris Darville.
Thank you, Dr. Joy Gates Black, and to our board, Mrs. Appleman and our Chancellor Hadley, thank you. It's an honor to be here in front of you all this afternoon. I'm really excited about this opportunity. Tarrant College has done a unique job with merging the academic and the student support services unlike any other institution that I've been at, and there is a strong desire to support our students, to make sure that our students are successful, and I appreciate that. A lot of times I sit back and I'm kind of jealous because I wish I would have had those types of initiatives when I was going through college. It would have been an easier time for me. So I'm I'm happy to be here. I appreciate the support and the welcome that I've been given since I've been here, and I'm looking forward to being a high-performing member of the team as we continue to push for student success here. Thank you very much.
I want you to know, Dr. Darville, where are you? I want you to know that we're very pleased to have you here, and now that you've told us that you wish you had had a lot of those things when you were coming on, we know that you know what our students need and we know that you expect to be a high performer for our students or else, you know. So, anyway, we appreciate you. You got there, right? We appreciate, we appreciate you, and Dr. Joy Gates Black tells me that you come very close to walking on water, and if that's the case, we'll teach you how to take the little step here, Tarrant County.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you for being here.
I am equally pleased to announce the appointment of Dr. Anthony Walker to the newly established position of Director of Student Success and Completion. In this new role, Dr. Walker will be working collaboratively with college faculty and staff to increase student retention and completion while building on the accomplishments of our Title III grant. Dr. Walker holds a Doctorate of Education in Educational Leadership from Stephen F. Austin State University, a Master of Education in Educational Counseling from Texas Christian University, and a Bachelor of Arts in Elementary Education from Northern Kentucky University. Prior to joining Tarrant County College, Dr. Walker taught graduate courses with Texas, excuse me, Texas Christian University's College of Education and served as the Associate Vice President of Student Academic Success at Jarvis Christian College and the Senior Academic Advisor and Coordinator of the Retention Initiative for Student Excellence Program at Oklahoma State University. Please join me in welcoming Dr. Walker.
Welcome, Dr. Walker.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, Chancellor Hadley, President Appleman, members of the board. Thank you, Dr. Black. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. I just wanted to quickly say that I've been with TCC for right at two months now and the experiences have been nothing short of great, and I do anticipate that the future will yield very similar experiences and feelings and that there's a lot to be said about waking up and coming to work every day and the blessings knowing that you're a part of a team and an institution that is focused, committed, and truly invested in the student's success. And again, thank you for the opportunity to not only be here but to be a part of TCC. Thank you.
Thank you. What's my question for you?
Yes, ma'am.
You you left where and came here?
My most recent was Texas Christian University and Jarvis Christian College, before that in East Texas.
Yeah, I know TCU has a relationship with Jarvis Christian College, so I was assuming you were kind of doing both, but all your shirts don't have to be purple anymore. Nothing against purple. I tell my dear friend, Dr. Fushini, that he has to wear purple all the time, but when people come over here, because we steal a lot of people from TCU.
Yes, ma'am.
And I tell him they don't have to wear purple shirts every day or ties.
Do noted. Thank you.
Mr. Marshall has the next introduction.
Good evening again. I have the pleasure of announcing the appointment to the new Executive Director position of Institutional Intelligence and Research, Dr. Rosemary Reynolds.
Excuse me. I want everybody to notice that title. Let me sink in for a minute. Executive Director, Institutional Intelligence and Research. And I want you to know that when Tim Marshall came to me with that title, I said, "Executive Director of what?" I said, "Well, there's a lot of intelligence that goes on in there." And he said, "Well, you know, we gotta kind of keep up with the times and look at all the different things that are going on," and I love that title, so.
It is a it is a challenge to ourselves to make sense of the of the mountains of data that we've been collecting and to make sure we don't not just deliver the information but also deliver a practiced approach and recommendations, and Dr. Reynolds is poised to assist the district in this in this manner. A native of New Mexico, Dr. Reynolds holds a Bachelor's Degree in Music from the University of New Mexico, a Master's Degree in Music Performance from Stony Brook University, and a Doctorate in Educational Administration with a focus on community college leadership from the University of Texas at Austin. She is also a licensed mediator in conflict resolution through the University of Texas Law School, so I'll create the problems and she'll smooth them over.
That's a good thing.
Yeah, it is. Among her Texas experiences, Dr. Reynolds was the Vice President of Instructional Affairs at Western Texas College, and prior to that position, she held dean positions at Tyler Junior College and the Blinn College District. Dr. Reynolds resides in Fort Worth with her son, Harry, and she also has a daughter, I hope I say this right, Isolda?
Izzy.
Izzy, a graduate student in psychology at Columbia University. Please join me in welcoming Dr. Rosemary Reynolds.
Thank you, Vice Chancellor Marshall. What a wonderful introduction. Good evening to Madam President, of course Chancellor Hadley, and the rest of the board. Dr. Darville and Dr. Walker kind of stole my thunder, but I will follow up on the heels of what these two fine colleagues, and I've had the good opportunity to meet with Dr. Walker. I haven't had the chance to work with Chris yet, but we're going to soon. I feel already a vibrant energy as soon as I walked into the doors of this great institution. The colleagues I've been working with over many years in higher education are jealous is an understatement and envious that I have landed here. For me, this is one of the most progressive and forward-thinking institutions, not only in the great state of Texas but in this country, and this is part of the reason why I'm here and I feel so very grateful that I have this opportunity. A very dear friend and mentor of mine, a gentleman by the name of Dr. Walter Bumphas, he's the president now of AA...
CCC.
Thank you. Thank you. He wouldn't be too happy that I didn't get that right. He said, "You know, at the end of the day, you need to learn to know what you don't know and be transparent in your ignorance about that. Be humble and always be willing to stretch and grow. I feel this is a place I can do just that and serve our great students and all the wonderful constituents and people that I've met so far." Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. We're also very pleased to have you with us. We're looking for you to carry out that new title.
I'll do my best.
Thank you. And now, Madam President, I have a few accolades, and it's interesting because my colleagues have been so kind to me, they have pre-selected what they want me to say. You know, every month, I go through and they send me all these wonderful things, and you all know here is that stack of everybody. Dr. Alan Govan tried to be greedy and take up the whole thing, but he didn't. He left, he left a little bit for Dr. Fulcriss and some of the others, but somebody went through and said, you know, "Here are the things you should mention tonight, so I'm going to be obedient and I'm going to use the pre-selected accolades." The first one comes from Northeast Campus. It's interesting because when I do my accolades, I started at South Campus. It's just a habit I have. I started at First Campus and then Second Campus and Third Campus, and I don't know if the campus members have ever noticed this or not, but even when I send emails to them, I do it in that order. I do South, Northeast, Northwest, Southeast, Trinity, Baby Come Lately. Tried to kick everybody out of the United Way deal and the TCC. That's wonderful, Carlos. Northeast Campus, the speech and debate team from Northeast Campus, naturally Northeast, competed at the TIFA. Now, whoever wrote this will be doing the acronyms, but it's a state tournament and the TCU Invitational in Fort Worth. The tournament boasted 15 teams from all over the state, including UT Austin. I love the way they always throw in UT Austin because we beat them a lot. Including UT Austin, Texas State University, A&amp;M University, they mean Texas A&amp;M University, TCU and more. The results of the two-day event were top novice duo interpretation, MJ Artega and Wyatt Tagle. I'm assuming these are your your students, Alan. Top novice program oral interpretation Wyatt Tagle. Third-place novice pros, Roseberry Preiska. Fourth-place novice pros, MJ Artega. Fourth-place duo interpretation, Wyatt Tagle, MJ Artega. That's all I've seen. Wonderful. Beat out all those big schools. How about that? Over 100, this is the second, over 150 students and faculty in the Northeast Business Department attended a luncheon seminar on Thursday, October 30, to hear a panel of local human resource specialists address the issue of what do employers want. I hope you all heard them. I hope you all heard them, Alan, because everywhere I go, that's what I hear. Mrs. Appleman, I attended the luncheon... Ms. Appleman, I attended a luncheon not very long ago from the oil and gas industry, and they all talking about what they want. Everybody wants those soft skills. Guys teach students, I mean, they're satisfied with the technical skills we give them. They are not satisfied, though, in many instances with the soft skills that are missing. These students and faculty represented Accounting, Business, Economics, Fashion Merchandising, and Management classes, the Human Resources Specialists, and you can see them listed there. We also had Denise Rania. Is that one of your people, Angela, from the Tarrant County College District?
It is.
Very good, who was one of those. And when I say Allen Govan, they need soft skills, I'm talking to all of, you all know that. I'm talking to everybody, not just Northeast Campus, but for everybody. So we really appreciate, that was a great program, I'm sure. On Northwest Campus, November 1st, 2014, the Fourth Annual Marine Creek Creative Writing Conference was held with Wendy Pierce, Leanne Oliver, Leah Lowenberry, planned an incredible conference for the campus and community as a keynote speaker. Oh, that will be, has been. Celia Charleston Jennings, whose nonfiction book, Scent of the Missing, is a New York Times Bestseller. That sounds like an interesting scent of the missing. Thriller?
Well, it talks about what she actually does when she helps.
Oh, that kind of.
And it's very exciting. It's nonfiction.
Wow. And then there was Anna Heinman, the Coordinator of Special Services at the Northwest Campus, won the Chancellor's Quarterly Employee Excellence Award. I got to meet her. The award was given for outstanding performance and exceptional commitment to Tarrant County College in the areas of focus on student learning and success, professional and personal growth, and wellness. Specifically, however, she was recognized for outstanding work in the development and implementation of the Mental Health First Aid Program on the Northwest Campus, and that's just an outstanding program that she's done. It teaches faculty, staff, and students how to recognize people exhibiting signs of mental health distress, and how to assist them when they need to get help. South Campus, the Social Sciences Department sponsored Revisiting the Law on Poverty, an interdisciplinary summit on October 23rd, approximately 250 students, faculty, and staff. I attended the morning session led by Professors John Ludenberg, Martha Musgrove, Armando Villareal. Over lunch, Carlos Rovelo introduced students Kaylee Johnson and Martin Smith, who presented art related to the poverty, and the students explained the rationale or thought behind each piece of art as the route to the exhibits in the student center. Number two, Food Service Distributor Company, Benny Keith has partnered with South Campus Career Services to recruit TC students for their part-time night order selector position. So that's underway now, Pete. Very good. With a student-friendly 30-hour-per-week schedule and a wage of $14 an hour, Benny Keith successfully hired four TCC students, two from South Campus, one from Trinity, one from Southeast. Benny Keith representatives worked continuously with South Campus to hire students for the spring semester. Let's up those numbers.
They're looking to have 15 by the end of this fall.
Very good, very good. $14 an hour, that's pretty hard to beat for a student laborer with a work-friendly environment, which means that they are going to work, that the students work their schedules around their class schedules. That's wonderful. Southeast Campus, two great pictures of Judith Carrier with students Karen Meacham and Diane Calderon for receiving her $2,500 scholarship from the Arlington Chamber of Commerce's Women Alliance. As I understand this, it was $2,500 each for each student. That's wonderful. The presentation was made at a luncheon held on October 30th at the Arlington Hilton Hotel with 400 people in attendance. Allison Hodges, instructor Culinary Arts, and Katrina Warner, coordinator of the Culinary Arts Program showcased their culinary arts skills as the featured chefs at the Texas State Fair Culinary Arts Celebrity Kitchen on October 10th. And if you get to go and see that, it's really been a great presentation. I've been in the past, but didn't get to go this time, but they do a great job over there. The Accrediting Commission of the American Culinary Federation sponsors that, so that was really good. And I also heard, Mr. Heed, that perhaps the premier event on the whole of the Southeast Campus was held recently. Did I feel your thunder? Did I feel your thunder?
No, no, no. He gave us those, and that's the menu for the evening.
This is the menu. I understand that our students on Southeast Campus in the Culinary Arts and other programs were just at the top of their game, and that you were popping buttons.[923.93][923.93](laughter)
Like he could take credit for it.
Like he had done all the work.[928.43][928.43](laughter)
I want to thank Dr. Coppola and his whole staff for what they did. We brought Rotarians to the campus, and we had 36 Rotarians, including three presidents, and the decorations were just incredible. Dr. Sanadil, just, he does all the flower arrangements, and the food was fantastic. Everybody just had an incredible time. We showed the film, and they got a real good taste of the excellence of Culinary Arts and the Southeast Campus, so thank you for all of that. And we raised a little money for scholarships, too, and we had the first recipient there. She helped prepare the pastries, so.
Very good. Next time, raise more money.[978.31][978.31](laughter) Just an incentive. You working on it?
Oh, yeah.
You know, I never get enough money for scholarships, so I'm always asking.
We're doing it again in the spring.
Very good.
Different group.
And now to the Trinity River Campus, October 24th. One of the things I really like about Trinity River Campus, and every time I say this, I think about some of the people down at our tenants, who were just blown away because we had a Halloween party on Main Street. It's really funny to me, because it was such an appropriate thing for our community college to do for our students, and they thought it was a disgrace that we had a Halloween party. But anyway, Tahita didn't pay any attention, she did again.[1023.23][1023.23](laughter)
It's our building.
Twenty-two student clubs, organizations, and departments participated to provide a festive and safe Halloween experience for more than 534 visitors. Well, those are all kids, and some of the adults live in. And then on October 29th, Forward City Manager David Cook toured the Trinity River Campus at the invitation of Supply Diversity Manager Andre McEwen. Very good, Andre. I saw him back there somewhere. He's always bringing people to see us. We appreciate that. You will see Mr. Cook. David Cook has been a very good city manager so far, gets out there, tries to figure out everything that's going on, and every time I see him, he gets another indoctrination about Tarrant County College. So Andre, I really appreciate you bringing him down there. TCC Connect, dual-credit hosted a series of professional development workshops for our partnering independent school districts and high schools. The workshops began on Northwest and Trinity River Campus and ended on Southeast Campus. What about the other two?
Five, they started, that is the circuit.
Except, you didn't say that, but anyway, that's okay. I know all five were included. All right, very good. You have to learn how to put all five of us in there somewhere, or else the other two might think they were little. The dual-credit team and collaborating student development services departments to provide information and training on policies and procedures to counselors on students participating in dual-credit through Connect. I want to say that very recently, I met with all the superintendents or their representatives here in this room as we did a follow-up on TCC Connect, both dual-credit as well as the other programs. E-learning and something, whatever, Week in College, Week in College. The superintendency especially were especially pleased to have that meeting. They got very, very involved. All the campus presidents were here to help us out. The one thing I keep saying is that TCC Connect is responsible for e-learning, dual-credit, and Week in College. But the campus presidents actually own the territories around their campuses, and they stay in constant contact with their superintendents and the staffs of those schools and work very, very closely with them. So I want the board members always remember, they still have their major roles to play. They just are not having to do all the logistics stuff, and that's working well.
Yes, and they're also service learning areas. They all have assigned responsibilities for different high schools.
They do.
They do. They know that.
Yeah, they do. Even though Connect also has assigned responsibilities, the two, and occasionally the two things overlap, but they're able to work those out. But the most important, the public relations pieces really belong to the presidents for the most part. That's been somewhat of a challenge for us, though, because the superintendents and some of the other people, especially who don't like working with two different groups, will complain a little bit, but they're getting over it, because they finally do see the value, and they see how we can grow that way. We can really grow, can help them grow, help them provide more opportunities for their students, and they like that. So that's very good.
That's great.
So, thank you, Carlos. Academic Affairs and Student Success Retreat was held October 31st with 314 attendees. Highlights of the day included a four-day weekend with the three-part message, Create a Yes and Culture, Listen to Others, Avoid Multitasking, and Support Others Who May Be in the Hot Seat. That's a very interesting one. Report others who may be in the hot seat, and Avoid Multitasking. Mike Eakin's not here tonight, but one of the things he and his team are really charged to do is to help us look systemically at what we do, everything we do, so that we can avoid multitasking, we can avoid all those extra points that we put in that we really don't need to do along the way. So that was very good joy. And then College Access Enrollment exceeded its goal of 10% increase in the number of high schools participating in the College Access Program from 51 in 2012-13 to 58 in 2013-14, for an increase of 12%. Wonderful work, wonderful. Now, my last accolade is for my dear, dear JCC member. Stand up for folks so I can see, see if I remember who all of you are.[1323.11][1323.11](laughter) See if I've forgotten anybody. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. So I can see who's missing. I counted seven.[1331.71][1331.71](laughter) So tell me who's missing. Steven.
Stacy's missing tonight, and...
Stacy's what?
And Greg Dursis is missing.
Stacy and Greg.
And Paul Leister.
Well, tell them that I said, "Welcome back."[1348.51][1348.51](laughter) Have you all been working while I was gone?
Always have.[1353.11][1353.11](laughter)
Y'all sneaking anything in on me?
No.
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 Cecilia, what'd you say?[1362.41][1362.41](laughter) You know, I love Cecilia. I love Cecilia. She will always... Where's Janice? Janice was here somewhere today.
Janice is...
Janice is another one. I can always count on Janice to tell me whatever she thinks. I can write anything on her. What it is, I send it out in five minutes. I don't think she ever goes to bed, I reemail. Chancellor, I duly, I duly, let's see, how does she normally say it? I respectfully request, I respectfully disagree with you anyway.[1397.26][1397.26](laughter) That's how it comes out, Mrs. Carlos. She always gives me food for thought. Thank you, JCC members, we appreciate you. That's it.[1408.91][1408.91](applause)
Thank you. All right. Several of us went to Chicago and attended the Association of Community Colleges Trustees' Leadership Congress. Tried not to embarrass you.
I understand you all did a wonderful, wonderful job.
We presented, we did, told them all about student success at Tarrant County College. Mr. Heed, do you want to give us a two-minute report on...
Two minutes. Well, we had just a wonderful time, as we always do. We learn a lot by listening to presentations by other colleges. I attended one program that had an update on federal authorities for community colleges. Another one on...
Is your microphone on?
Oh, it's on. No, it's not. Okay. Another one on the opportunities that we could investigate regarding veterans and actually on existing personnel on the Joint Reserve Base that maybe we're not fully investigating. We do a lot of stuff, but does some of these colleges even teach how to fly a plane or how to drive a boat? I mean, it's an unbelievable thing. This is in San Diego and Seattle. Attended a very interesting session on merit-based systems for pay raises, which is controversial. And then Grayson College had another one that was talked about, an internship program for electricians and so forth to work with manufacturers, actually go out and work on a job and learn. So it's very interesting, very worthwhile attending that whole program.
Ms. Van Der Grift?
I'll just say two things. It always is enlightening to be there, but Chairman Appleman was one of probably 30 trustees there who've had 25 years of service, and it was so thrilling, and, you know, it was certainly a testament to her passion for this college, and we were proud that she was up there.
I'm still waiting for my chair. They gave us one of those chairs, the fold-up kind that you take to your grandchildren's soccer game, and it has ACCT on the back, and all of us were, you know, "Thank you so much." How are we gonna get this on the plane?[1562.21][1562.21](laughter) And so I gave them my card and said I would look forward to receiving it. So it's supposed to come here to this building, so don't anyone take my blue chair if it shows up.[1572.01][1572.01](laughter)
Make sure we save it for Reginald.
Yes, Reginald. Several of us attended the Foundation Scholarship Banquet last week, I guess it was, and that thing has gotten so big, they're having to do selected invitations now, but donors come, they sit with their student recipients, and it always is inspiring and heartwarming and affirms what we're all about, whether we're on this side of the table or that side. And then several of us went to the Mary Gorley Luncheon, and again, we've had a 26-year partnership with that foundation, and I happen to have known Mrs. Gorley, and she was someone who came from a very modest background and with her husband built a huge manufacturing plant on the northeast part of the world, and left her resources for students who really need the money, and they can use it for whatever. They don't have to put it into our programs, but they can use it for childcare, for medication, for transportation, whatever it takes to sometimes bridge a very critical gap for them in the stories. They make them each one stand up and tell their stories. And we're not the only institution. UTA, UNT, TW, Tarleton? No.
TCU.
TCU. They do, they send checks to those students. David, help me out here. How much have they given us over the years? You quoted the number.
$1.4 million.
In the 26 years, $1.4 million.
Wow.
It is an amazing, amazing foundation, and the gentleman in the middle there is their executive director, and he comes every year, and I'm sure goes to all the other universities' campuses, too.
He's their executive director.
Bob.
Albrecht.
Albrecht, thank you.
The other thing, too, I think there's pointing out, and he knows it who's ever been, I think the students appreciate the notes they get as much as they appreciate the money.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, because those notes are so invigorating for them, are so inspirational to them, and they never know what the note's gonna say, and it's just an absolutely amazing opportunity for these students. It's almost like a dream unheard of.
Mm-hmm. Truly is. And then finally, tomorrow, we're all invited to Northeast Campus to celebrate our former Board President's 90th Birthday, Dr. J. Artis Bell. Unfortunately, I have Grandparents' Day in Dallas, so I can't be there, but I know all of you that can will go and give him a hug, tell him we remember him and appreciate him, and have some cake. Any other? It's in the afternoon, 2:00 to 4:00. Yes, am I right?
2:00 to 4:00.
Okay. You have an... Yes, we have, and I was just getting ready to say, do any other board members have comments or reports? Yes, thank you. You know, one of the great things that our campuses do is they host conferences that bring people from the community onto the campus, and I've been privileged this month to attend two great conferences. On Friday, November 7th, the Heart of Texas Conference on the Northeast...
On Friday, November seventh, the Heart of Texas Conference on the Northeast Campus. And one of the speakers was the VP for Governmental Affairs for Mary Kay, whom our chancellor had told us hosted an event in China. And as he was leaving the room, I took a moment to pull him aside and to say hello and to let him know that I was Mary Kay Independent Consultant. He was so excited. He said, "I, I, you were introduced. You're a board trustee, right?" I said, "Yes." He said, "I wish I had known that." He said, "I love your chancellor." He said that, "Oh, and with you as a board member, I just know we're gonna get some more collaboration" with Mary Kay and higher ed in China. And he showed us a picture, and I've not gotten a copy yet. He promised me one. There was a chancellor in the center of the photo, photo, sitting next to the mayor, and I think everything in, on the trip revolved around her. I got confirmation of that the following Friday, last Friday, at South Campus, where I attended the African-American Professionals Conference. And Lily Biggins, who's Chair of the DFW Airport Board and also President of Texas Health Resources, was the luncheon speaker. And I was privileged to greet her, and we've had some quiet time together before the lunch started. And she said that all she had to do was just stand next to Irma on the trip, 'cause everybody just flocked to Irma. And she gave me one of her cards, which has, this is her DFW, says Chair of the Board in English on the front side, and it's in Chinese on the back. So she said that, um, she was delighted. She said, "You're the hardest-working woman. She just wore herself out trying to keep up with you in China." So thank you campuses for keeping doing the outreach, bringing people onto the campuses. I always say that college campuses can be intimidating, but the more we people bring, the more we bring people onto our campuses for a purpose, the more comfortable they get there, the more they'll come back and bring other people. So that's very important work that you do. I know it's a lot of effort to do all that intensive planning, but those were two excellent conferences, and I commit to, to join some of the other campuses in the coming year for your conferences. And thank you, and thank you again, Madam Chancellor, for the hardest-working chancellor in higher education.
Our next meeting is December twelfth, which is just prior to the chancellor's holiday luncheon. So we will adjourn into executive session for deliberation of real property, Section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code, deliberation on personnel matters, Section 551.074 of Texas Government Code, and consultation with attorney, Section 551.071 of Texas Government Code. Thanks all, all of you for coming. We are adjourned. There will be action. Thank you. We will have action after the close meeting if you'd like to stay.
We will reconvene and Ms. Vandergriff has a motion to present.
On a recommendation from the Institutional Planning Committee, I move that TCC engages an outside design firm to perform an analysis of designated sites for the purpose of recommending a potential site for the Center of Excellence for Visual, Technical and Performing Arts.
The motion from committee does not require a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you and we are adjourned.
Good work board members.
Thank you for being with us.
We're moving forward.
Yes ma'am.
We're actually moving forward.
So Chancellor, are you going to stick around here for a few days or go back there?
I'm sure so. So next move is...